Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of March 15th, 2021. I just checked to see if he's recording. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live, and it's also being recorded for use at another time if need be. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you also please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're reconvening off of the last meeting because we started running long, and so we decided that we would reconvene this evening, and we are having a school committee meeting on March 17th here in the library at 6 o'clock. So, we're going to try and get through. We went through the budget. The superintendent and the assistant superintendent have put together a comprehensive budget, and it has many line items and many line items will help. So, we're going to go over the line items and all school committee members can see. You have a highlighted program in front of you. The yellow means help. As I read through, if no one has any questions, we're just going to move to pass and go on. I'm sure everyone's familiar with how town meetings are done. Lots of times, something will get held, and then it gets answered already, and we just move on past. We have a ton of them to do. So, in order to get through this tonight, let's see if we can move as quickly as possible. Number seven, under Indian Head Elementary School. Indian Head Elementary teacher's salary, $2,400,297. Question? David?
Jeff, my question wasn't particularly pertaining to Indian Head, but it had to do with the teacher line item. I was just wondering why you decided to break it up by elementary school instead of breaking it up by grade for teachers?
John, isn't that a... David's question is why we break it up by school instead of by grade for teacher line item salary? Aren't these DESI accounting numbers?
Well, can you come to the mic?
John, come up there, please. Thank you.
Actually, I think the short answer is it's past practice here in the district as far as I can tell. Looking at how we did it last year and years previous, it's always been reported as a single number, not broken out by grade. In the end, the superintendent's accurate. In the end, at the end of the year, we and all other school districts in the state file an end-of-the-year report that talks about where we spent our money. For your accounting types, it's really a sources and uses document, and that is done by the broad categories of elementary teacher and regular day and elementary teacher's spend.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Don?
Sure. Before I ask specifically about Indian Head, I just want to go back, Jeff, to your presentation and talking about our per pupil spending. So, it's...
Don, excuse me one second. We're strictly here to do line by line.
Right. Yes, I understand. Chair, we never had a chance to add questions or comments regarding the presentation that we've seen. So, I know that superintendent has presented it, but we really didn't have an opportunity even to ask a question. And in fairness, my comment relates to the entire budget. It's simply our per pupil spending. So, it's... We know it's at the bottom 5% of the entire state when you look at other school districts. That being said, we have a $55 million budget. So, I think these questions today, and this is overview, is simply, we have very few funds when we look at our per pupil costs compared to other schools, but we still have a lot of money that we're spending. So, we need to be sure we're spending it wisely and that we're targeting these dollars where they should. So, my reason for holding this line is a couple of questions. One is, how many teachers does this line fund? What would those class sizes be? And does this increase account for... We know we're in negotiations. So, does this increase count for steps, lanes, and what type of percent increase that might come across with the contract?
So, trying to answer all those questions.
I know it's a lot, but it's...
First and foremost, the... Our per pupil... Yes, we are low. Yes, we have increased over the past three years. So, our per pupil expenditure has risen, not to the extent that I think we should be at in this community, but it has risen. So, I just want to make that clear to folks. We're up and coming. We used to be seventh from the bottom, I believe in 2017, 2018, and I think now we're 37th from the bottom. And don't quote me on that. We're close. We're in a better spot. Going back to the line items, these do account for steps, and it's all contractual. So, step and lane increases are there, as well as we earmark a certain percentage because we are in negotiations. So, every teacher's salary line item, whether it be elementary teachers, special education teachers, anywhere that a Unit A, B, C, or D member is at, and that's PARAs, that's administrative assistance, we've earmarked them to increase their step, increase their lane where necessary, and put in an earmark for a percentage increase even though we are in negotiations. Okay? The other question, class sizes. That's a really challenging question to ask because we haven't put kids into classes yet for 2021. I did give out the committee at the budget last week what our projected class sizes will be at. So, I look at... And these lines right now, as far as Indian Head, Connly, and Duval, do not have the four teachers that we added to the budget last year. Pushed down later on into the line items, you will see a category that says professional staff. Those are the four teachers. We haven't placed those teachers yet because we're in COVID, and right now, those teachers are teaching remotely. Our average class size, even when kids come back, is going to be under 21 in our elementary schools. We do have a couple of classes of 20, could be 23, depending if kids come back. So, we did not place those. But based upon estimates that I got from the elementary principals, it looks like Duval's going to be slated if kids return for two of those teachers. It looks like Connly's going to be slated for one, and Indian Head's going to be slated for one to try to balance off class size. So, we take what we project when we do these lines for especially elementary and middle to say what class sizes will be, where we might have to move people. But all Indian Head, Connly, and Duval, those are the salaries of the people we have slated to teach in that building next year. I think I answered all of your questions.
So, if I heard you right, so the dollar amount does not specify the percent increase. We can't tell what you're budgeting for here as far as contractually. I just...
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Fred?
That would be something that's subject to negotiations, and quite frankly, we're... That would be an executive session item because that could hurt the body's negotiating position.
I understand. I think my question more so is, what is the placeholder for this dollar amount? I don't know if it's 1%, 2%, 2 and 1/2. I realize we're in negotiations,
but it's... Well, it could be very different because different teachers go different steps and lengths. So, there could be a teacher that moves down a step and over two lanes. That could be a 4% increase in their salary. It's not a strict two across the board or three across the board or whatever we negotiate. So, when we have to look at who's moving over... So, I look at Cindy right now. Cindy is going to move down a step and could get her master's or master's 45 this year and turn in her schedule, and she might make an extra $6,000 next year. So, the percentage is difficult to itemize per person if that's what you're looking at.
But would you know what those steps and lanes are, aside from someone getting a degree, which you would know they may be going for? I just... I think we need to know what we're...
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, this is something we can't be discussing because it could hurt the negotiation body. Who knows what we're negotiating?
Money is there for what they have. I got Chris, two guys. Wait a minute. Chris, go ahead.
So, I agree. So, I understand what Don's asking, but I also completely agree with Fred. So, I think if we need to have an executive session to go through exactly what the estimates are in executive session so that the committee understands it, to me, that would make sense. But because we are in negotiations, I really... I don't think it's... I don't think we would be doing what's in the best interest of the district if we said, "Hey, this is exactly what we have estimated. Is this is what you're thinking?" Because now we're not really negotiating anymore. We've just kind of provided the numbers. So, I don't know, Don. Maybe there's a way to do that in executive session where Jeff could say, "Here's what I put in for placeholders for all the teacher salaries in terms of estimates. This is what's actual. This is estimated," and we could do that outside of this. I'm just... That might be a more effective...
Right. Is this a conservative estimate? Is it high? Where could it come in? I mean, we have to vote on a budget amount. So, yeah, that's the nature of my question. Okay.
Dan, did you have something to add?
No. Go on. It's just that the figures, Jeff, the figures would be where we currently sit this year. It's whatever the last contract is. That's the numbers Jeff has to pull. He can't predict what we're going to negotiate.
I know he can't. I know. I understand that, Dan. I understand if you can't project.
Can we move to the next line item, please?
That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
All right.
And if it can't be given, that's... I understand, Superintendent. Thank you. Thank you.
So, yeah, we look at... I think the harder number for you to... For me to project is where salary... Where teachers are at, at steps and lanes. I can project steps, maybe not necessarily lanes as they go. And there might be a different percentage per person.
Okay.
You know, there's going to be an overall percentage at some point, but it's more difficult when you drill down to the individual person.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Just to follow up on the class sizes. There are some... I see some glaring questions here when I look at the numbers you gave us, and you did just say two at Duval, one at Connly, one at Indian Head. Based on these numbers, though, that would leave a Duval school still with 24 kids in a class, which I think our goal should be heading into this remediation year would be 20, no more than 20 in elementary school classes. And it's just looking at these numbers. We see an Indian Head class with 82 has five teachers. A Duval class with 80 has three teachers. So, I would like to see firm numbers of what the projected class sizes are, and if that has to come Wednesday.
You won't have firm numbers on Wednesday. Kids aren't back in school, and we are not scheduling until April or May. That's... I said that once before. These are projections right from the principal. I appreciate your wanting to lower class size, but my job is to put teachers in classes as best I can with the monies that are given by the two towns. This is what I have as projections. That might change. I have no idea when I'm coming in at first grade or kindergarten at this point, when we will move people around. So, your question and your statement is heard, but you will not have accurate school enrollment projections by Wednesday. You might not have them by April. You might not have them by May.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, number seven, we're all done. Not passed. Number nine, Indian Head Elementary instructional materials, $18,075.
I think I held that line. Ken, we just have... What kind of instructional materials? If outside of ELA curriculum, what...
No, it's building-based. Whatever the principal really decides what they need. Is it readers? Is it local? Is something a teacher asks for? But just to give you a roundabout, we use school size per pupil enrollment in that building, and we average between $42 and $44 in instructional supplies per pupil for that. So, it's really building-based. It's up to the building principal that what they might need, what they get. That's not necessarily out of the district budget. So, it's really up... It's building-specific.
Okay, number nine, passed. Number 10, Indian Head general supplies, $10,300.
Those are really office stuff, you know, general supplies, paper, crayons, pencils, staplers, whatever they need in supplies in their office or classrooms.
I think my question would be, can that be used for musical instruments? You know, we don't see any specific elementary, you know, music. How does that fit into budgets and decision-making?
That would be building-based again, need-specific. It seems like, you know, I know PTOs play a very valuable part in providing musical stuff in our schools because our district budget, our line items have been so miniscule over time.
Right. We don't have a specific line for that. Okay.
Okay. 10, passed. 11, Indian Head photocopier supplies, $43,374. David?
This year, we asked teachers to do a lot of technology, and I just was wondering going into next year if there's anything they learned that they're taking into next year that we can consider when using photocopier supplies, like if there's ways we can save money on paper or things like that with more technology being used.
Absolutely. George, you want to grab that?
So, you're right. So, if I could just explain this line. This line is obviously... And then I'll get to the second part. This line is obviously at $43,374. That also included when McQuon was collapsed. So, when McQuon was collapsed, we had two schools that became one school. We lost the fifth grade, and they gained two other grade levels. What we did at that time was we left it there as a placeholder because if overruns took place at other schools, that was the buffer to make sure that we could make the copies. But I will tell you from September 16th, when we began through February, I have the report that I get the report every month that costs for copies. The volume of copies has decreased, people making copies. Also, you'll find at different schools, I have the varying amounts, and that's directly correlated to the professional development and the technology that had taken place over the summer. So, you are correct. We're still in a contract for the Smart Center, but the goal is, is that with teachers now increasing their technology, then we have to put or divert or change some of our funding as we move forward in the years to keep that technology piece going and to take it... Not to take it away, but hopefully use some of the funds that we spend in paper, toner, and the contract itself so that we can make sure that we're teaching in that vein. Yeah.
Thank you, George.
Yep.
Dave, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. And is it... I know you held every copy one. Is that going to... Does that answer your question for every building or...
Um, yeah. It's more of a general question of just how we can save money and what we're doing going forward, what that transition to more technology-based and to paper-based.
Absolutely.
Fred, and then Hillary, if you have a question?
For some of us senior citizens that have been around for a while, that was part of the award that we won from Masbo years back was transitioning with the copy center and technology. So, it fits into what we've been doing for the past, you know, nine years?
You're right. And just so you know, if you take a school... Because it's all on my desk right now. But if you take a school such as the Connly School, Connly School has made something like 77,000 walk-up copies at the school. But what we try to do is we push all of that for the teachers to do it through the Smart Center because the price point is much different. It's much... It saves us a lot more money to go through the Smart Center than it is to go to the individual walk-up computer, let's say, walk-up copy machine. So, we try to make sure that everyone uses the Smart Center as much as possible. However, as we move forward, case in point, Google Slides. Google Slides is a way that teachers can present information to students, and one of the things that, you know, there are many different ways, but you can like lock the PDF or the thing that you're showing the students. You can then push it out to every single student, and when they get it, it makes their own copy for them, and then they can annotate and write on it themselves, send it back. So, that whole thing is an example of how we're not using paper. We're using technology to move forward and to hopefully even make sure that the people who are like myself over 50 can still learn how to do things.
Hillary, you good?
I just wanted... We just need to keep in mind that we're not a one-to-one district yet, right? So, the need for the photocopier and for students and teachers to still use paper is still a need that we have. Obviously, we're moving in the right direction, but just something...
George, you asked the plan. That's coming.
Right. But I also... Right. Right. Yeah. Yep. I just wanted to point that out.
Because I think if I say it enough, hopefully it'll happen before I retire. That's my goal.
Don?
All the copier lines for all the schools added up. I did the math. Pre-COVID, the actual spending in this FY '20, 2020 actual columns, $242,000. So, that's before we had the bonus of extra Chromebooks and so forth. So, our budgeted for FY '22 is $411,000. So, how can we reallocate some of those funds? It seems like a large increase, actually 70%. So, I don't know if there's reasoning for increase in copier expense.
Can you... Don, can you just clarify? Sorry. Could you clarify? Did you say 20... What were you comparing 2022 proposed to what?
No, the actual 2020 actual column spending was $242,000.
Okay.
We may have budgeted more than that.
Yeah. So, 2020 actual compared to 2022 proposed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
So, just in... I mean, before John even... We shut down in March of 2020. So, March, April, May, June, we didn't copy really anything at all.
True.
So, I mean, we just kind of rolled that over. So, that 2020 isn't a great...
Reference, right.
Reference point. I would go to 2019, and it depends on the year, how much people copy. I think that's going to be a reduction, but I would hesitate to pull it out and be bailing out at the end of next year. I don't know what teachers are going to be coming back in their comfort level. So, John, if you wanted to add something?
Well, no, I think that's pretty much it. As we go through this budget, so last year when we did a budget, the confusion that we had was looking at line items, it didn't seem to line up to previous spending trends because we had... That picked... 19 was the year we picked up the closure of McQuon. So, now we look at this budget and say, "So, what should we be looking at?" And in some cases, as the superintendent suggests, we shut down in March. We stopped consuming items. We stopped buying items. And so, you really have to sort of look at 19 for some of these items to see what did we spend then and what was the trend. In other cases, what we spent in '20 is useful. For instance, electricity didn't really change as much as I would have thought it would. So, utilities, we consumed more or less in a normal pattern, but an awful lot of what we spent in '20 was drastically affected by our closure. So, when we look at this, we're looking at what would be two years of inflation, increase in costs from 19 to 21, and then we go to '22. That's yet another year. The other thing I would say is that we're really paying by usage. So, we're making a good faith estimate as to what it's going to cost. There's some fixed costs involved, but once we get past the fixed costs, it's so much per image, so much per piece of paper that's used, and if we don't use it, then we don't pay it. We get a credit that can be carried forward. So, it's a, if you will, sort of riskless to us, and we can reallocate in future years.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Number 11, passed. 14, co-curricular activities, $762. Passed. Number 19, Indian Head sped teacher salary, $276,637.26.
Yeah, I had that one, Bob.
Chris?
So, and my questions are going to be kind of the same, Jeff. So, anytime I just saw anything kind of change, just looking to understand the why behind it. So, I think on this one, we were at 185 in 2019, 185,000 in 2019, 186 in 2020, 190 is what we budgeted for this year, and then we jumped up to 276. So, just looking to understand the reason for the bump.
So, the reason for that bump is the TLC program that we added to the Indian Head school. So, that represents the teacher that we added.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
The same would be true for the next line, too.
There you go. Thank you. And Lauren, while you're up there, why don't you just explain the sped teacher salary at Indian Head because it's a little different than the other two elementary schools?
Yeah. So, we... If you remember, we talked about how we did save money through becoming members of the South Shore Educational Collaborative. We used those funds to start a program at the Indian Head Elementary School because we had a need there. We have five students currently in that program, and we have eight students in the program over at Connly that's made up of all three elementary schools. So, that line item, line item 19, is the increase of the TLC teacher.
I was really thinking of line 21 on speech.
Yes. Line 20... Are we ready to... Any questions on 19 or 20?
19, go on.
As a follow-up, for students that are attending the TLC, what is the screening process? How is that determined of their enrollment?
We have a procedural guide that was developed. We did training with Landmark, who is kind of the pinnacle school of... I'm sorry. I'm confusing that with another program. So, we... For every one of our programs, we have entrance and exit criteria, and it's a team determination based on the student's profile, based on testing that's completed, based on student needs. And so, if you're interested in seeing that, I can share it with you, but we have a procedural guide for all of our programs that include all of those entrance and exit criteria.
Okay. Are 100% of the students screened for this program?
Screened. So, 100% of the students have gone through the eligibility determination process where they're evaluated and determined by the team to have a learning disability. In this case, for the TLC program, it would be a disability that's more of the social, emotional, or behavioral nature. And then the team determines that with that disability, the student can't be educated. They're not accessing their education in the general setting. They need a more substantially separate environment. So, if the team determines that they're not making effective progress in the general setting, then they will recommend a smaller substantially separate program.
Okay. And there are a total of 10 students. I'm sorry.
Can we keep limited on this? I know we have quite a few to get through, and the clock keeps ticking. No disrespect to Lori, if perhaps we could have a presentation of the sped programs that are available, et cetera, you know, that we can devote our complete attention. Perhaps that would be more appropriate?
Excuse me. I was still speaking. I believe I had the floor.
Okay. Point of order. Can we move? Move on?
Okay. Okay.
If now is not the time to speak about the budget and programs, I don't know when it is, and you want to put it off?
Don, now's the time, but to get into why they justify how many students and what the students are doing and how they are screened is not the time. That's the time to ask Lauren at another meeting. Or, we're not going to go through the expertise of the superintendent, of the sped director, of the assistant superintendent. We can't do that on every line item. We can't. I mean, if you have separate questions and you want to get together with the superintendent and talk to Lauren, but we can't.
But some questions I'm asking...
That's what we hire them for. I believe that we hire the superintendent, and anybody on the committee can jump in. Before we go any further, I think we need to straighten this up. I believe that we hire the superintendent because he has a license, and we have trust, and we have to have some sort of trust. I believe he hires the sped director, or we do, and George, for the same reasoning. We have to have some sort of trust. Same way we hire Ernie. We can't ask why each school had 27 bags of rock salt. They have a budget. We have to have some sort of faith in what goes on with our leaders. That's all I'm saying. "Oh, we're going to be here past Wednesday night," and I'm not picking on any specific person. I'm just making a general statement, and that's all I'm going to say. So, any further questions for Lauren? Don?
With all due respect, this is students' learning, education, and social, emotional well-being. I was asking about the TLC program and how many students who live in Indian Head are in a TLC program.
No, I think you asked exactly what will the qualifications for that screening process for that program. You did ask that, Don.
And I have to jump in. Students have a right to confidentiality.
Yes, very much so.
By saying how many students, that could potentially put them or their names out there. So, we have students at Indian Head. I don't... We shouldn't be giving numbers out at any TLC program, any special education program, because people can look at that and dig in deep. They have a right to confidentiality. They're special education for a reason, and they trust us with their education. So, yes, we have a TLC program at Indian Head. Yes, we have a TLC program at Connly. Yes, I know that doesn't meet what you want it to be right now, and I can understand that. But there's not a need based at Duval right now. My job is to put kids in... Or programs in place with funding for the need. Special education is very broad. Lauren's done a heck of a job putting programs in place district-wide to meet the needs of our students. In this budget presentation, she's asked for more money to meet the needs of our students. It doesn't necessarily adhere with different members of the committee want. It's what we feel is important for our kids at this point, and we decided last year there was a need for a program strictly for TLC at Indian Head. We put it in place because we found some money. We didn't take taxpayers' dollars at this point. We found money because of joining the South Shore Education Collaborative. We were able to combine that in and put this program in place at minimal cost to meet the needs of our most at-risk students.
Okay. Mr. Scriven, and then we're going to move on.
Jeff kind of covered it. It's... Some of this stuff is, you know, for them to deal with.
Everybody else okay? Don? Okay. 19, passed. 20, Indian Head sped PARAs salaries, $159,685.49.
So, I had that one, and I think she already answered the question relating to the TLC.
So, you're all good?
Yep.
Anyone else? Passed. Indian Head sped speech salaries, $181,649.76. Indian Head sped speech salaries, 181,649.76. Passed. Okay, Conley.
Thank you.
24 was held. Co-um, elementary teachers' salaries, 2,243,564.97. Passed. Number 33 was held. Library instrument supplies, 1,845.78. Passed. 36. Sped teachers' salary, Conley Elementary, 275,800.86.
Yep.
Chris?
Yep, so same question as before. This one just kinda jumped up a little, and then same with the bottom one, it actually jumped down a little bit. So just looking to understand why.
So we, um, used to have two BCBA's in the district, and over the last couple of years, we've been able to add more. So one of the BCBA's has been moved full-time.
Sorry, what's a, can you?
I'm sorry, BCBA is a beha- uh, a behavioral specialist.
Thank you.
So we, um, have one of our TLC programs at the Conley School, um, and these students need a behavioral specialist. And so we were able to, by adding more BCBA's to the district, we were able to move a full-time 1.0 position to, um, the Conley School, and that position is reflected in that line item.
And then, was that same with the para? I don't.
Um, you mean the next line?
Yeah. 'Cause that one actually went down.
You hold that one too, Chris?
Yeah, I did.
37.
Yeah.
We can do 36 and 7 together.
Yes.
Okay. So the next one, Noah, is we're just, we're down to paras based on need. We can have students moving in and out of programs, and that, that number's just reflective of the need right now.
So the, the challenge with paras, too, if a student moves to Whitman Middle, takes their one-on-one, or if they come off a one-on-one, or if a student moves out of district, so paras fluctuate, and, and these are really challenging because we can add... On September 1st, we could add two paras because a student moves in or qualifies, as Lauren said, through, through the evaluation process. If a student is deemed through the evaluation to need a one-on-one, and we don't budget for it, we still have to cover that. So those paras can go up and down.
Perfect. Thank you.
Everybody good on line 36? Passed. 37, I think she answered that question, too. 37 line was 201,010.79.
Actually, Chair, his.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Good question. So we have the speech as a separate line item. Are there OT's included in the other line items? Do we have?
Currently, right now, our OT's are done through contracted services. We contract through the North River Collaborative for our OT's. There's not line items.
Okay.
So, so.
So we have OT's.
We, we have OT's, we contract through North River. So Lauren, I don't mean to, to keep you up there, but can you just, uh, go back to Indian Head's speech? It's more than Conley and Duval.
Yes.
Explain why, because I think it's important for the committee to see that we just don't have two speech therapists in Indian Head.
Right. So several of our speech therapists are between schools in the district, um, but they might be reflected all in one line. So for example, two full sa- two full speech salaries are reflected in line 21 for Indian Head, whereas actually Indian Head has 1.5 speech therapists, and Hanson Middle School has 1.5. But those 2.5 positions are both listed under Indian Head. The same would be true, Duval has 1.8, um, speech therapists, but they're kinda split in between the lines. So you'll see for those speech therapists that are between two schools, the whole salary is reflected in just one line.
So, so the Duval speech person is one person, and then another line item that Lauren has in district-wide speech, or district-wide sped, you have a .8. Something that we're gonna clean up, to make it a little cleaner for you folks, is, is the sped piece, uh, because in the previous administration, sped was all over the place. We've done it better this year, but even going line by line, there are some things that I think we wanna clean up for you for next year as we go through.
Thank you, Fred. Quick, go ahead.
Um, real quick, Jeff, uh, if we get through the budget reasonably quick, uh, looking at sometime April, May, perhaps, could we schedule a complete sped presentation?
Sure.
So just, it can bring everyone up on all the programs that we offer, uh, everything that we're doing, uh, without class sizes, et cetera, and maintaining confidentiality.
Be very happy to explain what we do pre-K to 22. And I think no one's ever talked about that. We service students as young as three and students as old as 22. We talk a lot about the kids in the middle, but we do serve, it's under Lauren's realm of our post grads and things like that, so we can absolutely do that, um, once we get through or, or anytime. Um, and tell, tell folks what we actually do here for our special education students.
I, I agree, and it would be great to just have a comprehensive head count of all that staff, 'cause it takes a lot of people to service and educate every student. Thank you.
Okay. Line 27. 37, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, don't go backwards.
Passed. Next, Duval Elementary School. Duval Elementary Teachers' salaries, 1,957,81.79. Dawn?
I think you've answered this already, Superintendent, regarding class sizes. That's why I held it.
Yeah, it's just, it, it's, it's steps and lanes for that right now. Um, and don't forget.
And it doesn't include any additional that you'll add.
No, not yet, not yet.
Okay.
That, all the, all the elementary salaries, though, also include our Unit B members, which are our elementary assistant principals. Okay, there's not a separate line item, uh, in salary for, for assistant principals. That might be something we break out in the future as well.
Chair, just a suggestion, um, we seem like there's quite a few of these that people, uh, you know, the answers, questions have been answered. Can we just read the number alone and say, does anyone wanna address the number? And if they do, you can read what it is and, and the amount, and we can just keep rolling?
I, I think we have to, just for the sake of people watching, Chris, so they know it was held and what was done where. I know it's painful, but.
Well, I just, it's, that's fine, but, I mean, if we're, if we're not gonna talk about it,
Okay.
it doesn't make sense to read it, does it?
So number one was, number 41 was passed. Number 54, sped para salary, 207,380. Dawn?
Yep, could we have an explanation, the reduction from 2020 to the proposed?
Lauren, you wanna come up? It's what's needed right now?
Yeah, again, it's, it's just need-based. We do have a lot of programs at Duval. There's four, four different classrooms. Um, para needs fluctuate.
But your, but your numbers are down, which is, we, we can only assign a para or put paras in place where they're, where they're needed. So in, in 2020, there was 341,000 in, in paras. That was when the programs moved over. We budgeted this year at 203, we're up to 207. And again, that number might go up as an actual later on, depending on where we open up in September for, for the needs of the kids in, in, in those special education rooms.
Okay. Just for clarification, this might fall into our future meeting. Um, but those four classrooms, you said, programs, that is separate from any needs base that may be needed for your typical in-
Correct.
classroom students. This is, those are some sub-separate rooms, is that correct?
Yes, this number here, line item 54, is for all para professionals at Indian Head, both inclusion.
Duval.
I'm sorry, Duval, both inclusion and sub-separate programs.
Okay. So do we know if the reduction came from the inclusion classes or the sub-separate? I, I guess that, that's where I'd be looking for clarification, where that reduction came from and...
Reduction from last year?
It was 134,000 re- dollar reduction from 2020.
To what we're proposing.
And that, was that based on needs or classes, what Dawn's talking about?
I was wrong, I can answer that. There have been, there have been no reductions to para professionals in the inclusion setting. So those came from sub-separate program maneuvers. There were a lot of students in the, when we look at the 2020 actuals, that either transferred in, transferred out, graduated and left with their para, or were outplaced. So, but we, as a district, have not reduced the number of in-school instructional para professionals for special ed.
Okay.
In class, I should say.
54?
In class.
I'm sorry, just a follow-up, though. I think the explanation was that a BCBA or one staff had been moved over.
We're talking about para. Yeah, right, but I thought you were talking about para professionals.
54.
I am, but, okay, then I guess I, I was asking about a... I heard Lauren say that a teacher had been moved into, was it Conley or Indian Head, a full-time, had been placed there and moved within the district.
A BCBA was placed into the Conley Special Education law. You will see where the BCBA's are in, for Duval, Indian Head, the high school, Whitman Middle, 'cause they're all shared within the district. Again.
Okay.
Back in the day, prior to us, there were two BCBA's in the district. We've been able to escalate to, or increase to four because of needs of, of social, emotional kids.
That's right. I just wanna be clear with everyone that a BCBA and a para professional-
Very different.
are two different things. So I was speaking only of para professionals in-class support of teacher aides or para professionals, not of a BCBA. I just wanted to be clear.
Okay?
Okay.
54, passed. 55, sped speech salary, 93,698. Passed. Moving on to Whitman Middle School. Whitman Middle Teachers' Salary, 2,519,308.
I have a question. And I, I will, you know, aside from class sizes, um, can you tell me about related arts teachers and access students would have at Whitman Middle? I know that, um, when I was a parent and George Farrell was a principal, um, there were not enough related arts teachers that students, George, you may remember this, you would say, right? Every student coming in was not able to take art and music or technology because of limited staff, um, so.
The issue, well, if I, if I can, I, I don't, um, the issue at that point was, was that in order to lower class size as much as we could in the related arts, we had seven available related arts teachers, 'cause we had lost one where we had eight, but students could only fit six blocks into their schedule. So as a result, every student would miss one, but if you did it that way, then you would at least lower class size. So that's the way it was at that time. Right now, there are different things that go on at both different schools, but if we're talking about a COVID issue, if we're talking about our COVID year, students have access to the same amount, um, for every teacher there is. However, at that time at Whitman Middle School, because there were such excessive class sizes in the 30s, that's, that's the way we had to do it. Because if we were gonna go down and lose two related arts teachers in the past, that would've skyrocketed classes, but then every single person would've had an opportunity to have all of those sections. That was then. But now it's, you, you get the related arts that your teachers can offer.
Okay. So I think the basis for my question is to make sure when students come back in the fall that all elementary students in the district have the same opportunity to have all these related arts, because we know art is therapeutic, music's therapeutic, you know, um, and that those are available within this budget. 'Cause I can't see that with this line item of teachers. I can't see those related arts availability, so.
So are we talking Whitman Middle School or elementary?
Whitman Middle, now.
Okay.
Okay. Line number 60, passed. 63, photocopier expense, 22,917, 22,917.18. Passed. Guidance salaries, this is Whitman Middle still, 136,334.
Yeah. I had this one.
So, as a result, it's, if you can just bear with me, if you look at 67, and then you were look, you were to look at a couple other ones down below, we added a guidance counselor to the TLC or the Behavior Room or the Therapeutic Learning Center, whatever you wanna call it, at the Whitman Middle School. Uh, the need of the children was so much that the person stayed on. Last year, they were a long-term sub because we had some movement, um, without a school psychologist, and so we were able to do that. Most of the money from that salary, though, came from a reduction of the library salary para and then the, um, a special ed para who had left. So what we tried to do is we added a guidance counselor, um, to a specific program, but we were able at that school, through creative scheduling and through some working with the staff that was there, to garner, um, almost 40,000 of that salary in order to make, uh, in cuts in other areas.
Thank you.
Okay. 67, questions? Passed. 72, psych services salary, 68,474. Question? Passed. 73, sped teacher salary, 551,221 dollars, 220 dollars, I'm sorry. Questions? Passed. Sped para salary, 178,561. Passed. Moving on to Hanson Middle School. Hanson Middle Teachers' Salary, 2,297,759. Dawn?
So I'm remembering back to last year when Hanson came forward saying they would need an override, and we had to present as a committee and new superintendent what potential cuts may happen to the district last year. And we talked about the risk of class sizes being changed. And one of the cuts was going to be at Hanson Middle for teachers in order to provide equity among the district. And people said, "Well, why isn't Whitman Middle School having staff cuts if this happens?" Well, 'cause Whitman Middle School classes are already high. Um, so my, um, question is, is there any change to that picture in essence? If we, you know, do we still have that disparity, that inequity in class sizes where Hanson Middle had more teachers, if you will? If I'm looking at this class size presentation, it does show Whitman Middle, eighth grade is higher, projected at 24.
Yes.
And, and the others, so.
So just.
I would be looking for that.
So, uh, just saying with, with staffing, I mean, we, we shoot for 20. I don't think we could, I mean, the eighth grade class at Whitman Middle right now is 24, and they're, they're graduating, and that's, that's on average if they come back. Hanson Middle's looking at 21 right now, and just as a, as a, you know, student-teacher ratio, if I'm looking at Hanson, Whitman Middle School, I'm looking at a 15.6 to 1 student-teacher ratio compared to Hanson Middle this year projected at, at 17 point, uh, point 1 to 1. Uh, just because Whitman Middle has more, and not, that's not necessarily classroom teachers, it's all teachers. So Whitman Middle has more relateds right now per pupil than, than Hanson Middle. So we try to keep the, those class size balances best we can, and it looks like if trends go, and again, we talked about an enrollment projection uh, in, in a future meeting, Whitman's enrollment is, is going down. Hanson's enrollment is actually staying pretty consistent at about 100, give or take 100 to 102 students per class. Whitman's is dropping from that 192, and as you can see, grade 6 and grade 7 is 30 students less. So you're gonna see in the future probably some leveling out of classes and some evening up of class sizes within our, when our, within our district.
Okay. I got a question. So are you, we, this, this was held because of Whitman class sizes? Is it number 79? Is that what I'm understanding? We held that because of Whitman class sizes? Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
Is that a question to me, Mike?
Yeah, I, I.
No, it was a question to remember the discussion from last spring about the, I remember you were actually the committee member when it was presented that four, potentially four Hanson Middle School teachers could be cut.
Right. I don't understand how that relates to number 79.
Okay.
Number 79, Hanson Middle School Teachers' Salaries, and you mentioned Whitman. I, I'm trying to get through why that was held.
I want both schools to have.
When we get to Whitman, we can talk about Whitman, right? That this is the Hanson Middle Teachers' Salary. I, I just don't understand why we're.
And, and this doesn't break out how many teachers around that-
That's what you're asking, not anything to do with Whitman, right? Is that what, that's what you're asking? I just don't know how it's relating to, I don't know that's how that's relating to this, this, this right here. You're asking now about class size?
I would like to see how many teachers that that-
That's what you're asking. Okay. That's, that's definitely a relevant question, not relating to Whitman. I'm all for that. Thank you.
Hillary?
I think it's important to understand, and I don't know, I think Jeff and George are trying to speak to it, but when you look at the number, the, the money number for teacher salaries, just because a school has less or more money than another doesn't reflect the number of teachers they have in the building because of the way that teacher salaries are structured. So you could have a building that has ten teachers and another building that has five, and the five teachers could cost double what the ten teachers cost because of their years of teaching, their expertise, their level of degrees. So I think that needs to be considered. I, I'm just saying it for the public to hear because I don't know how well they can see this, and it might sound like one district, one school has more than the other, but it's so much more complicated than the money figure that's here, and that's what people need to understand.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, Hillary, and I did request for that detail to be provided to the committee of all, a head count of all staff per building. So we have a clear picture of that because I understand that salaries do vary with teachers in different levels of experience.
Fred?
We should not be pitting a Whitman School against the Hanson School. We are not Whitman School District, we're not the Hanson School District. We're the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. Every school, every kid, no matter if they're from Whitman or Hanson, should matter absolutely the same to us in every school. Abington, eh, maybe they're over there a little bit, but Whitman-Hanson, that's what we're all about. Whitman-Hanson, we all, we're all together, we're all one.
I think John McEwen used to say, every child, every day. Healthy minds, healthy bodies.
That was rude.
I thought she stole it from, from John. Okay. Seventy-nine, pass. Eighty-two, copier, twenty-two thousand, nine seventeen. Pass. Library salary, sixty-five, six oh one. Pass. Sped teacher's salary, six twenty-nine, two sixty-six. Ninety-one. Pass. Ninety-two, sped para salary, two seventy-one, five eighty-eight. Pass. We're on to the high school. High school teacher's salary, four million, eight hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. This is still high school. General supplies, forty-four thousand, four twenty-six, line one hundred. Pass. One oh one, Twenty-First Century Support Salary, sixty thousand, seven eighty-two. Pass. Other expenses, eighty-three thousand, five hundred, number one oh two.
Question?
Dawn?
Can we have an explanation?
What was the question? Other expenses, Chris. High school other expenses, eighty-three-
One oh two, line one oh two.
So what, what other, what are other expenses? Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay. That's our community evening school. That includes that, that includes edgenuity, association memberships for teachers. Basically, it's a, it's a large fund that we bunch all of these different things into. We pay our NHS fees, out of that, our PSATs that we pay for the students come out of that. So just to give you a rough idea, edgenuity, I think I signed the contract prior to Chris, it was about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. That came out of high school other expenses. There was no line item from the district. The night school that we created, instead of charging students years ago, we split the cost between special education and the high school to the tune of twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. And then those other expenses, as Chris said, you have a, a certain membership that you have to, to, you send kids to NHS membership. Different things come out of that line. It's kind of like, it covers things so that kids can do what they have to do if you need things in the high school that aren't covered in a, in a, in a line item.
I mean, we pay for Shakespeare out of that, everything from Shakespeare to different trips that come up that students, that teachers can take students on, things like that. It's truly the definition of other.
Okay. And when you say community evening school, this is not the salary line for those teachers? This, is it?
No, that, that includes-
That is.
That includes that, that includes transportation.
Okay.
That is their salary line because it's stipended salary. They're not, it's, it's an after-school technically. So we hire a, a community evening school teacher on a stipend, an hourly rate, instead of a stipend. So that, that pays for their, the, the director of night school through the year, so. And I don't know if, Chris, you want to just give a brief overview for those people watching, what our community evening school actually is? Because it's a different, different program for-
Right. It's a different pathway to graduating for students. They have a separate graduation right before our graduation typically. What it does is it shaves off all the extra classes that a student would take to offer your non-traditional student a pathway to graduation. So they come and they take part in edgenuity courses, and they take part in their regular core courses that are taught after school for a time in the evening, community evening school. But they, they pass through, they fulfill their graduation requirements as required by the school, and then they're, they're awarded their diploma, they graduate.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, just real quick, just not for this year, but maybe as we move forward, I think as a general, I don't know if this is where you're going, but personal preference, I hate other expense, like it just, so the more we can move away from other expense and more we can get detail, it takes away from the questions. I know in professional experience, whenever someone says other expense, I always, that's just my thing. But I don't know. I don't, so if, if, to the extent there's any opportunity to do more detail, I know we only have so many lines and things, so maybe not, but that's, you don't even need to answer it. Just for future reference, it might, we'll probably ask the question every year, just when we see other expense.
That's in the works, the idea of our-
Fantastic.
Because we have new viewers this year, too, maybe not in last year to hear what the eighty-three thousand, I know we had it last year.
So like I said, you know, Georgia and I looked at this again today, and we can improve. And, and looking back historically, in the three years that have gone by relatively quickly, the first year was about cuts, last year was about assessment, this year is in COVID. So to really try to dig down and look at this, I, I'm, I'm open to feedback, especially in the line items, but this is the document that was passed down to me, that has been there, as John said, historically. So if we can get deeper, we can. Go from there.
Okay. One oh two, pass. One oh three, graduation expense, thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars.
So just really quick on this one, it was seventeen, then it went down to five, which I understand for COVID, but now it's back up at thirty. What, what, what kind of, what's the difference? Why, why did it jump from two thousand nineteen at seventeen thousand a year up to now it's like thirty thousand a year?
We're expecting increased work and hours and billing and running for electronics because we're going to be holding it outside. So we're not sure what that expense is going to be.
I'm guessing it's going to come in around twenty-four.
I'm good with that.
We're usually around eighteen. But Chris and I talked about that today. I don't know what it's going to be like, especially if, if we have to set up and store it for a couple of days ahead of time and if we have to move. So I'd rather go high. Traditionally, when I was in that role, we were always short. Graduation line used to be thirteen, and we were always averaging eighteen to twenty.
Thank you.
Line one oh three, pass. One oh five, copier expense, seventy-eight, nine thirty-six. Pass. Athletic salary, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, one oh seven. Dawn?
Does this include the revolving account for athletics?
Bob?
No. None of the salaries are paid from revolving. Revolving, I, remember I gave the presentation about what revolving does? I could do that again in another meeting if you guys wanted to, but that pays for our game officials, our bus transportation, the equipment, the, the only salary that is paid out of revolving is our athletic trainer, and that's a contracted service with Signature Healthcare. But all those salaries are all the coaches.
Anyone else? One oh seven, pass. One oh eight, athletic supplies, ten thousand, two fourteen. Pass. One ten, athletic equipment, eight thousand.
That's athletic equipment maintenance. That's the state mandated. The reason why that number was lower before was because it was, because of COVID, we didn't have to do as much.
Pass.
Thanks, Bob.
Co-curricula, eighty-two thousand, oh ninety-five. This is, again, just mentioning, we're on the high school. Dawn?
Superintendent, can you just clarify what the co-curricular, those are stipends for clubs?
Stipends for clubs out in the, in the, in the contract. Chris, you want, those are your class advisors, those are all your after-school activities?
Those are all four-year class advisors, all our after-school clubs and activities that run on a yearly basis. So those, those are the stipends for the, for the people that run them.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, just, and this is probably something for a later date, but how often we review those stipends and how long they've, you, you're new to the school a couple of years, but, you know, have those been flat for many years or several years?
So we, we negotiate those in the contract. So they're in the contract, so not necessarily the club itself. So like, you have two class advisors, they've been there, but their stipends increase with every teacher contract. Trust me, Kevin and Cindy are right on us for athletic salaries and co-curricular stipends across the district.
Well, the staff works really hard, and, and I know the clubs are so important in addition to athletics and serving all students. So I just-
And they, they're audited each year by me. They have to fill out audit forms that justify basically, for lack of a better term, what they're doing and show a product of their club. And then each, it comes up contractually because they're in the contract, each of them. And if a new club comes up, we have extra stipends set aside that are a very low number that we award to the advisor that runs the club, just in the event that the club doesn't take off because sometimes we have clubs that'll last two years and it just, it doesn't take off for whatever reason. But that gives us the flexibility. You've often heard me say that if you have an idea for a club, come to me, we'll do it because we want everybody to be included. So that gives us the ability to do that.
Yeah. I heard from a student, unfortunately, the opposite happened when we had our nineteen staff cuts because a high school social studies teacher had to be moved down and was the model UN advisor. And I did have a couple of students talk to me about that, how much they loved that Model UN program, about ten students in there, and it seemed like no, there was no one else to pick that up back at the high school.
No, and sometimes that happens, but that is still, there is still a place for that in the stipends. So if somebody does come back to the idea of wanting to do, to do a Model UN, we still have that ability. Just like today, I received an email with a couple advisors' names for an AV club. That's a different spin. So that, that allows us to do something and look at something like that.
And those fluctuate. I mean, I don't think Chris was here, we, we had the frisbee, we had ultimate frisbee. It was a flash for, for four years. I had some freshmen that wanted to do it. We got a stipend for it, and then they graduated and nobody wanted to do it. Had the same thing with the Harry Potter Club, and that disappeared when, so, you know, Elizabeth graduated. But those stipends, you, you have your, your set stipends and then you have some fluctuation. So it's, it's too bad that nobody in the history department or anybody in the building wanted to pick up Model UN because it's, it's a good resource for kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Line one twelve, pass. Line one twenty, sped teacher's salary, six hundred and forty-eight, eight twenty. Pass. One twenty-one, para salary, two seventy-six, eight ninety. Pass. On to district-wide. District-wide, professional salary, two hundred and eighty thousand.
Yep. Bob, just what is it?
Those are the four teachers we had in the budget last year that are teaching remotely right now that'll be in classrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Two eight, number one twenty-eight, pass. One thirty-five, business finance superintendent's contract, eighty-five hundred. One thirty-five. Dawn?
I think just clarification. I don't know if that's Business Finance Office or if that's U Central Office?
It's both of us. So we pay, John, the, the eight thousand, you explained it to me today. It's one of those, I know we paid for our Crisis Prevention Institute training out of that line, and there's a couple of other things that come out of the business line. So CPI training in the district all night, or six through twelve, every building, the two middle schools and the high school have to had, have restraint-trained people. We paid two people to get restraint-trained as trainers so they could train our own folks instead of outsourcing it up. So that, that came out of that line, and then John had something else out of that.
And then on the business side, there's some contracted services that we pay for out of that as well. It includes, for instance, professional fees paid to Unibank that acts as our financial advisor in terms of issuing debt and doing continuing disclosure.
One thirty-five, pass. One thirty-seven, business finance clerical salary, salaries, two two six, oh six seven. Dawn?
Again, clarification, just how many employees?
Three, three employees.
Very few.
Yeah, down, down from four.
Yeah.
We didn't replace one in nineteen, after nineteen.
One thirty-seven, pass. One forty-three, teachers' learning other expenses, one sixty, one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Dawn?
Explanation?
Cool. That is the complete account that holds all of the professional development and/or district curriculum things that we purchase yearly. So that has things like Simple K-12 is in there, which is our professional development platform, that has things like our, well, I can tell you exactly what it has, but it's four pages long. That has all of our professional organizations in it, that has some things that go specifically just to schools, like elementary schools, that has our professional organizations for both the sta, the principals and the central administration, has things such as the NESDEC pieces that we do. So anything that I spend money on or the district spends money on from a district standpoint that's not school-related but benefits multiple schools would come out of here.
Would that include the ELA curriculum?
No. That is not. But that would include, for example, ReadWorks and StoryWorks and things that augment the curriculum at the elementary levels and also the middle school levels and on some degree, depending on what it is at the high school level. But that is basically what, what happens is somebody says, this would benefit the high school and this is why. And then if it's so, says so, and we do it, and we feel that it's in the best interest and aligns with our standards and what we want, then we can look at it, and this is the account that would pay for it. Also, all of the evaluation software that we have to have for every teacher comes out of this line, and it is a yearly repetitive line.
One forty-three, pass. One forty-six, instructional materials, five oh eight, one thirty-one.
And that would be the line. So this is the continuing curriculum line. If you remember, previous to getting here, we had never purchased elementary revision, uh, elementary curriculum materials. So this is the line that houses science, this is the line that hi, that houses ELA, this is the line that houses math for the elementary. Now, the theory going forward is that we are then going to implement, we're hoping to implement our grade six ELA program, continue that in middle school with just a sixth-grade pilot next year, this would be the line that it would come from. We're also planning revisions in middle school and high school. When I tell you that some of the books that are used in seventh and eighth grade and, I'll tell you, it was before I got married, was the last time we had a, a revision in middle school. So this is the growing part of curriculum materials that would, in a perfect world, supplement EL, supplement elementary, middle, and high school. It does have our science, it also has year one of our IXL. IXL is a second additional way that we can help with students to pinpoint any inaccuracies or any topics that they need, and that is also covered in that line.
Thank you.
One forty-six, pass. One forty-nine, professional salary curriculum director, six eighty-eight, four twenty-five.
Yeah, I have this one.
I'll just jump, jump in on that.
Yeah, so it was just, it kind of went, it went here, it went down, and then I thought we were kind of moving away at one point. I could be-
So, so we, these are our five high school curriculum directors who also teach and our elementary curriculum director. And they, in nineteen and in twenty, they were all over, they were in high school, the teachers were in high school teacher, or their salaries were split, the five salaries were split. This year, we want to make it clean. All six folks are in this line, right here. So they're out of the high school pieces, they are just curriculum directors. Even though they teach, it just makes it cleaner for us to see where they're at and for you to see where they're at.
Thank you.
Follow-up. Do we have a technology curriculum director? Do we have a position like that?
Not, go ahead. He wants.
We, we did away with that position a few years ago during budget cuts. So we have, Steve Burke is the Assistant Director of Technology, and at this current point in time, any questions that come through from a district level, come to my office, and we go from there. Because we are, if you noticed, last year we had, and you'll see it reflected in the budget, we were able to get another Level Two person in technology who's a high-level person who works on our servers. So we felt in the best interest of the district in doing things that were, for the betterment of not only us in the department, that it was better to put another highly qualified, very smart worker bee and leave the decision pieces to, I guess, someone like me who doesn't know that much. That's, that's what we decide.
We're working on, on more, and George has a vision, too. We've talked about technology curriculum, ed tech.
Right.
Right, because that's systems versus classroom.
We're working on that, we're piecemealing that right now.
Correct. So we have a plan going forward that we, we needed to replay, we needed to upgrade our systems. So with Steve Burke, who's very intelligent, who most of you know because now he presents with us, doing some of the work, the true work of the Assistant Director, we were able to hire another person based on last year's budget that went through. That's Marshall Nye. So those are our server, those are our guys that talk about stuff, I don't know, and probably most of you don't. So then we also have the ed tech piece, and the ed tech piece is a vision that we have that I've shared with everyone that'll hopefully grow, that'll hopefully not impact the budget that much. But we need to start bringing in what are called tech coaches to work with our staffs. We've put so much money into devices, we've put so much time into professional development that now we need to make sure that teachers are free to teach, but they also have the guide on the side or they also have the person that they can look to for continued PD and for continued learning and for continued software and things that are out there. So that is also the next step that is coming.
So just a follow-up, to echo Mr. Small, we are one district. And from an enrollment report, I saw the name of the classes at the middle school. So I, Whitman Middle has STEAM, Hanson Middle, I think it was called, data integration or something like that, and I want us to be one district. I want to believe that our students at both schools are learning the same technology, and this is the basis for asking, you know, do we have a technology curriculum director type of position? So that when they both rise- So that when they both rise up to the high school, they're on the same technology learning path, going to technology classes at the high school, so this is the nature of that question.
Right, so, so both middle schools still have a lab-type setting, and they also have one that's a little more hands-on, if you would. The lab-type setting, I believe, is called, it's run by Ms. Snow, it's called Computer Integration at Handsome Middle. And then you have one by Harley Hadad, which is called STEAM at, at Whitman Middle. There's the same approach as to, it's one of those things that's designed to help students with their work in a technological way. However, some of those things might be changing as we move forward, because we are moving away from standalone tech as opposed to now integrated tech. But the goal is to make sure that as students enter the high school, they have a similar-like experience.
Okay, I guess my suggestion would be, can we name it the same thing, you know, so incoming classroom, oh, I had STEAM, oh, I had this class, oh, but we learned the same thing, you know, the word...
Absolutely, that's, I've had those many discussions without the six principals who were at Handsome Middle while I was at Whitman Middle, and that never seemed to stick, so I did what I wanted.
Okay, thank you.
149, pass. 150, ESL program teacher's salary, 180, 006. Pass. Supplies and materials, 10,000. Pass. Central office photocopy, 22,058. Pass. Instructional supply, general supply. Instructional support, general supply, 60,000. Pass. Support OIS, 10,816. Pass. Supplies and other expenses, 114,444. Pass. Tuition to other schools, 29,309. Pass. Tuition school choice, 258, 640. Pass. Tech services information management salaries, 202, 452, 66. Don?
How many staff in that salary line?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Two.
Pass. Tech services, tech professional salary, 470, 470,465. Don?
Number of staff in that salary?
I want to say it's seven, but I'll have to, Jeff, I think you have the piece of paper right there.
I do, I have too many pieces of paper right now. Can we come back to that?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, 169, we're going to pass over.
It's six. Six.
Thank you.
Okay, six? Six, Don?
Okay, yes, thank you.
Pass. Tech services, 285,099. Contracted services, it is, outside contracted services? Pass. Tech services supplies, 230,849. Pass. Employees' benefit salary reserve, 460,000. Pass. Employees' retirement, 3,65,598. Don?
I'm not going to ask you how many retirees. No, the question is more in line with OPEB costs and OPEB liability that relate to this line. So it's more a comment that there is no line item in this budget to fund our outstanding OPEB line, liability. That's my comment.
Pass.
Chair?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Fred.
I think we do have somewhere around 50,000 in our OPEB liability savings account that we established about seven, eight years ago.
And the liability is 100 million.
Liability, at that time, it was a million dollars a year for 30 years. Might catch it, might catch it up, so. It's increased, and it keeps running out of control. Is that correct, John, roughly 50 grand?
That's reasonably accurate, yes. It's been a number of years that we've contributed to the OPEB.
Line 191, employee health insurance, 4,650,000. Don?
Jeff, in your presenting, presentation, you had $100,000 as the rough for the increase in this line. I'm wondering if that's conservative, that we may see higher based on COVID and health insurance costs and so forth?
Could be, I mean, we, we got those numbers right from Mayflower, right? The health insurance?
Correct.
I mean, based on a 4.4 million dollar, you know, expense, I almost wonder if 100,000 is really budgeting.
So we feel comfortable with the number that we presented. When we originally started this, we were concerned about COVID and what would that mean in terms of expense, as well as what would medical inflation? Well, we turned out that, and had anticipated a larger number, and that's really where that number had come from, it was an estimate. Mayflower Municipal Health Group, which is the group, group that we purchase our health insurance through, has come through, and we are looking at a 2.25% increase for next year. So what we did is look at what we had for total number of contracts that are out there this year, increased it by that, by that amount of money with a little bit extra, because we never really are quite sure how many people are going to come or leave our insurance program. Although it's a relatively flat number, we're not looking to have large increases in staff next year, nor are we looking to have large decreases in staff. So we're comfortable with, long way of saying, we're comfortable with that number. If you will, it's almost as if we're resetting to, to a new base level that we'll deal with in the future.
Okay, thank you.
191, pass. Sped teacher's salary, 326,276. Pass. Sped non-clerical para, 24,000. Pass. 198, sped general supplies, 50,656. Pass. Sped tuition to other schools, 4,596,744. Pass. District OPS liaison expenses, 20,000.
Chair?
Yes, Don?
Who is the liaison?
So it's really not a liaison, so that's our line item. Remember when we hired Guilfoyle Public, our pub...
PR.
PR firm, I want to say publicity firm, PR firm. And George, what's that other, the other line in that is the, the PR firm and the, the...
I gave you...
Yeah, I know. Sorry.
Okay.
208. It's our PR firm and... And Secure Alarm, it's our fire panel.
Fred?
Do we know how much we're paying for that PR firm?
Close to $10,000 yearly. 9588 is my contract right now.
A good place to, what, how long, when does our contract expire?
It's a yearly contract.
Okay, line 208, pass. 209, lease details, OPS, 11,735. Pass. Transportation contracted services, 1,715,000. Line 211. Don?
This is still being negotiated, right? This is transportation, buses? Okay. Any update on that, or?
Any update, John, on transportation since, since the last week?
I think, as the committee may remember, this is a contract that we put out jointly with Abington, although it is not a joint contract, we both can, can accept or reject the bids that we get. We have the, I believe we have the final draft of the, of the bid documents that'll go out. They were just sent to me today, and tomorrow Karen and I will review them and share any thoughts we have with Abington, and come out with a final document, and that, that'll go out to bid.
Thank you.
Line 211, pass. 215, facilities maintenance salaries, 415,580.
Seven people.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Pass. Facilities contracted service, 233,000. Don?
Are the, these must be contracts for various equipment, thinking?
So, so right now, I look at Waltham Pest, I look at Granite City Electric, Norfolk Power Equipment, four pa, five pages of, of different things that Ernie has to do throughout the course of the year. Waltham Pest is a lot. So that's, that's his line item to make sure things are operating during the course of the year.
Then include the...
It is equipment too, Don, because Ernie mentioned Norfolk, I know that we have a load of it, we were saving, you know, a bunch of stuff.
Okay.
Fred?
Does that include the elevator contract as well?
I'd have to look.
Otis, or...
I wish I could tell you off the top of my head, Fred, but I'm not sure.
I believe that's in that line, Fred.
Probably is, it's one of these.
217, pass. Facility supplies, 200,000. Don?
I mean, I held it, it's, I think it's a little follow-up to our facilities meeting. We talked about a lot of spending that the district does to repair things, and, and just the cost of maintaining buildings that we do not bill back to the towns that are more than 5,000 for capital items, so.
Lot of Home Depot, lot of factory paint.
Right.
Lot of, lot of things like that.
Right, right, so, thank you.
It goes to what I was saying earlier, I wasn't being fresh, there's rock salt, there's all kinds of stuff that goes into district buildings that we can't bill the towns independently for, because it doesn't meet the threshold of the charge, so.
Chair, just one thing...
Go ahead, Fred.
That within facilities and with our, within our new matrix, we will be coming out with a more building-specific repairs that don't necessarily meet the threshold.
Yes.
Repairs, not general supplies.
No, no, I understand.
But repairs, so that we can get a better scope and look, you know, within the district.
Great, thank you. 220, facilities other expenses, 68,500. Pass. Facilities building maintenance, 125, 125,000, I'm sorry. Pass. Facilities emergency repairs, 125,000. I can answer that if anyone has any. Pass. Okay, we have gone through, I believe, 77, or right around there, hell, for a total budget of 57,572,579.40. Wednesday night...
So, so can I just make a comment?
Yes.
That's, that's a different number that was presented two weeks ago, three weeks ago on that Wednesday. It's lower, we made some adjustments, we found some, some errors in the line items. So when we reviewed these, we saw, again, and I want to say, this has been a really challenging year, especially in personnel, because we have people all over the district working remotely, we've hired a lot of folks, and we had some double numbers. So we wanted to be extremely accurate. We feel very comfortable in this number, which is less than what we presented at, in our, our, our budget presentation. So Wednesday night, we'll, we'll come forth again with this number, and we'll have to talk.
Okay, so our next challenge is Wednesday night, we're going to have to discuss the budget. We have gone through all the line items, as you can see, and as the superintendent has just said to you, there's going to be some adjustments made between now, Wednesday night, and he will present and tell us what they are, and then it's up to the school committee to vote on the budget.
We'll come forward with, with the assessments, and I, I just want to jump in. I am speaking with the Hanson Selectmen tomorrow, it's a posted school committee meeting. Michelle will send you, she hasn't already sent you the link. The Whitman Selectmen also asked me for next Tuesday, if I'm available, I think they were going to bring me in. Lincoln and I haven't touched base, but I think I'll be on the docket for Whitman next Tuesday as well, to discuss this. But I think our task on Wednesday is to determine the assessment and send it out to the town. As we've already talked about, and we'll talk again on Wednesday, once we set the assessment, we can't go up, but we can come down. And right now, we already have a different assessment than what we presented at the official budget meeting, so.
I mean, you have a budget number that's different.
We have a budget number that's different, correct, I haven't presented the assessment numbers yet.
So we will be doing the budget, we will be doing an assessment, and we will be voting on that on Wednesday night. That's kind of your charge, so if there's anything that you're looking at in this, and you have any, bring your questions, and we will be discussing all of it, not line by line again, but we will be discussing the final number and what the superintendent's going to re-present to us. I don't know if it's higher or lower, it sounds like it's a little bit lower. And that's what we'll be voting on, and we'll be voting on the assessments. I believe, Michelle, we have 45 days, am I correct? How close to that threshold are we?
It's Wednesday.
Seventeen.
It's Wednesday, that's why we set it for Wednesday.
Okay, so Wednesday night, be prepared to vote on this, because we have to get it done Wednesday night. We only have 45 days. The very fact that I'm hearing, and again, I don't know if this is just rumored, it's talked, Jeff, weren't they about moving town meeting?
Yep.
To June, when we're doing the graduation, so we can have it outside. Hopefully, five, six, 700 people from each town will come.
Nothing's been confirmed, but there, there is discussion.
There's discussion about it, they're going to use the graduation field, we're going to have it set up, kind of like we did before. Maybe both towns will be able to use it, so it may change. But any of the rumors you hear, ladies and gentlemen, anybody watching, that is maybe in the works, but it hasn't been voted yet. So that's kind of where we're at. Chris, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say thanks to the administration, like, we had 70-something holds, right?
Seventy-seven, I believe.
Seventy-seven holds, and, you know, answers very thorough and educational, and, and, you know, we're all satisfied, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Nothing further, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Commandments, thank you, good night, everyone, see you Wednesday night.
Thank you.